Over the last three years, violent crimes have gone down about one-third in South Dallas. Now, it sounds like a big number. We're proud of that. I think not just as a result of Police Department efforts, but the results of a lot of your efforts in this room. I'll talk for a moment about Crime Watch and about the VIP program. I had a lot of citizen involvement that I think is also a key goal in that. Southwest Operations Division was down 29 percent. Southeast is down about 34 percent. This is violent crime. So you can see some fairly significant accomplishments a long way to go. And that exceeds the citywide decreases. In 1993, we had a 16.2 percent decrease in violent crime in the city of Dallas. But again, one victim out there is too many. I want to talk about some of the initiatives. We kicked off one this last week, and some people, I was asked by a number of people whether or not it was in reaction to the driveway robberies that received so much attention. And I can stand here and tell you that we've not, the mayor and I have talked the last three or four months about a task force or some effort to go out and pick up people that we know, that we all, we've already identified, that have outstanding warrants. They're either violated parolees, or they're individuals that have outstanding warrants for some violent offense: robbery, assault with a weapon, those kinds of offenses. What we've done, as of tomorrow, or as of Monday, rather, we've assigned 25 officers. These are not coming out of patrol. On a temporary basis, we're going to look at it for 60 days to see how much accomplishment can be made in terms of picking up those 650 or 700 people that we have outstanding warrants on, that we've just not been able to locate. We've not had the structure or the resources to do that in the past. We know that many of these people are the same people that are committing crimes over and over and over again throughout our city. And I'm optimistic. I think that taking these individuals off the street, we're going to see, will contribute even more to the decrease in crime. The council, the last three years, has put additional money in our budget to fund what's been called a lot of crimes fasters. This last year, 1993, and these are broken down, these are not citywide numbers, but these are broken down as a result of those monies that we use. And what we do is we use those monies to pay officers overtime, to bring them in for periods of time when we know there's high crime, and they go out and attempt to prevent that, or make arrests. This last year, 1993, focusing during peak crime periods, in South Dallas, we did 190 arrests and made, wrote 3,172 citations. We made 520 arrests and wrote just over 1,000 citations in Oak Cliff. So very productive. The majority of these, the majority of the arrests are in South Dallas. About, about a, about half of our violent crime occurs south of Interstate 30, which is basically South Dallas and Oak Cliff. And about, in regards to that, about half of our resources are assigned south of Interstate 30 in the Police Department. Pardon? Yeah, they are, half of our departments are assigned south of Interstate 30, when you look at the way we allocate our people. The mobile storefronts, I think a lot of you have seen the large order homes that we've gotten, and these have come through community donations. Both Southeast and Southwest have these. They were the first two that got them. We've currently got three in place, we've got a fourth one. And we started in South Dallas with the mobile storefronts last year. They were the first divisions to get them. We still do not have one for the North Central Division. The reason for that is we started where we felt we could serve the community the best. However, we do think we've got one that's been donated that will go to North Dallas. But we started with mobile storefronts in South Dallas. Three of our four fixed storefronts in the Southeast, three of the four of the storefronts in Southeast Operations Division are located in South Dallas, and those are on Bear Street, Road Terrace, and Sprint Avenue. This last year, one of the things that we know has been a problem in South Dallas has been the random gunfire, that at any particular time, well, you know, you hear people outshooting their guns off for whatever reasons. This last year, we got a $40,000 grant to reduce that. We've seen our calls drop some. This next year, we applied for a $60,000 grant to try to take in further that effort to reduce the random gunfire. A number of people, including the gentleman that I talked to the other day up here, have voiced to me since I've been here in Dallas, the concern about drugs in South Dallas and Oak Cliff. And their frustration that we have certain houses or certain locations that we don't, we can't seem to put out of business. Folks, we need your information. And I've asked these gentlemen up here, it's one of those situations where you don't think you're getting enough attention. Please call my office, or call these two gentlemen over here, and we'll get some attention to it. But I can tell you that our narcotics bureau, which we expanded significantly two years ago, I give a lot of the credit to in terms of reducing violence in Dallas. Our homicide investigators, fellas, the reason they think our homicides are down, the extent they are, the primary reasons, is because of the activity of the narcotic street squads. This last year, in South Dallas, we made 1,210 arrests, seized 224 weapons. That's in South Dallas. In Oak Cliff, we made 412 arrests and seized 113 weapons. And that's just the narcotic street squads that did that. And we will continue to push our narcotics enforcement groups. We recognize that particularly crack cocaine is a major, major problem. On Crime Watch, I would ask any of you here that are not involved in the Crime Watch program, please contact us. We'll help you set it up. It's the number one thing that you can do to reduce crime in your neighborhood. We'll help you organize it. We'll assign an officer to come and help you organize the meetings. How you, how you take and start to become more self-reliant in your own neighborhood. I bet you people know there that what the expectation is in the neighborhood, but we'll help you organize that. I can tell you, the first year, or neighborhoods that have a Crime Watch, or neighborhoods that don't have a Crime Watch, generally have about 30 percent less crime. So it really pays. So if you don't have a Crime Watch, please contact us. We've got a display out front here today, but also the gentleman, either Chief Hampton or Chief Halliburton, can also help with that. There's 93 Crime Watch groups in South Dallas who met 552 times last year. Oak Cliff has 110 Crime Watch groups that met 120 times last year. But we would really encourage you, if you're not involved, to become involved. Councilwoman Mallory, we had to wait for another meeting, talked to you about the current, we had the current town halls that were trying to get input from the community to give direction as to what needs to be done to deal with the juvenile violence in the city. And she commented on that, and so did the mayor. The two of those meetings, those town hall meetings, were held in South Dallas and two in Oak Cliff. I attended most of those meetings, and there was a lot of good input. I think we're going to see some excellent outcomes. Liquor sales. I know that there are certain areas in South Dallas that are overrun with liquor stores. And one of the things that we're attempting to do, and I can tell you that the mayor has a specific interest in this, is how do we take and stop the illegal liquor sales, alcohol sales, to our kids? We've done liquor sweeps on Bear, Silkwood, Second Avenue area, done 18 inspections, five liquor stores have been closed, three bar closures, and we've noted 1,200 code violations at this point. Now, there's a requirement that we give a certain period of time to correct those code violations before we take our enforcement action further. But we are pursuing the liquor stores and the whole issue of liquor being sold, or alcoholic beverages being sold to our kids. And that's a problem citywide that is particularly focused in a couple of areas here in South Dallas. Truancy enforcement, a major problem. And we all know today, I think, that the number one thing we can do to guarantee the success of our kids is keep them in school. Beyond the keeping them in school, I don't know if you read this morning's paper about the number of new jobs we're projected to take and occur here in Dallas or in the Dallas forward metroplex over the next 20 years. But you know, it's very optimistic, but we've got to help our kids be prepared for those jobs. And the education is the key to that, we know that. But truancy, so far, since last August, when school started through March 1st, we picked up 1,920 truants in South Dallas and 2,168 truants in Oak Cliff, in the Oak Cliff area. Very high numbers. What we do is we return those kids to school, and the school works out a parent-teacher conference to try to take and address those in the early stages. I think all of you remember that the last fall, we seemed to have a series of gang-related violent incidents that culminated in a woman being killed over in Oak Cliff, that absolutely had nothing in herself to do with gangs. And not that any of the violence was acceptable, but it just reaches a point where you're not going to take and let it continue on. And we put together a gang task force. At that point, we pulled in patrol officers. Our gang unit has 15 people assigned, and that really, it's good for gathering intelligence, and it's good for doing a little bit of enforcement, but they don't go very far. They can't stretch 15 people very far over a seven-day week over a city the size of Dallas. So we brought in 45 more people for 60 days, and in that 60-day period, we made about 900 arrests, seized about 60 guns. But what we saw was a break in the pattern. Now, I'm not suggesting to you, and it wouldn't be foolish for anybody to stand up here and tell you, we solved that problem, but we've taken, have broken that pattern at this point. And we're going to continue to do that. Now, we reduced the size of that task force just because we solved a level of activity problem to 37 officers. And I have, there's no plan at this point to take it and reduce it any further. I think we need the 37 people who are there, and we'll continue to do that. Can we hold back for questions later? It's a good question, but we'll get to it in a second. At this point, up to today, we reduced the size of the task force after 60 days, which was in February, we made over 1,000 arrests, we seized 88 guns, and about 60 percent of the gang enforcement activity is in South Interstate 30, either Oak Cliff or South Dallas. We've got officers that teach in schools, I think many of you are aware of that. Our teens crime community is in the high schools. It's a citizenship-based program where we talk about crime prevention, violent crime, and Lincoln High School here is, if we're the active participants. We're going to train our Southeast Neighborhood Liaison Unit, that works with Chief Halliburton. These are the liaison officers I'll talk about in a moment. I'm going to train them as instructors so we can increase that effort. Also looking at how we take and develop action campaigns to include neighborhoods in terms of cleanup, tutoring, peer counseling, all coming up at activity within schools where our officers are involved with kids. Community policing, as the mayor said, we have begun our community policing efforts in many ways throughout the department, throughout the city, but our primary focus has been in Southeast. Last year, we created the Neighborhood Liaison Officer Program experimentally here in Southeast. We're very pleased with the results because it brings that service and brings that officer very close to the community. We've got 18 officers that are assigned with Chief Halliburton, and they are assigned to neighborhoods, and how they help that neighborhood deal with a whole variety of problems that you might see. We're very encouraged. We've applied for a federal grant to ask for 67 more officers, and I'm not sure what our chance of funding there are, but to do this citywide. But the next division that will get Neighborhood Police will be Chief Hampton's, the Southwest Division will be next. Our Volunteers of Control, this is an extension of Crime Watch. And for any of you that are already involved in Crime Watch, what I'd ask that you do is we've got a 10-hour training program. This is where you patrol your own neighborhood. We'll give you a 10, it's a 10-hour training program. We don't want you to get hurt, so it's a non-confronted kind of thing. We've got an arrangement with the Southwestern Bell or cellular phones to give you communication. But it's where you go out on the street and you can talk to your neighbors and patrol your neighborhood during certain hours, and when you see something happen, you call us and let the officer come and take care of it. But in those neighborhoods, we even see even a more significant drop in crime than just with Crime Watch. So it's something that every Crime Watch group needs to think about. Our safety, abatement unit that we've got that deals with code enforcement, law enforcement, targeting on specific locations, we've been working closely, and I think a lot of you in this room, they all know people on the safety, because we have been selected here in South Dallas. Use it to try to close drug houses and force liquor violations. I talked earlier about our safety team members in terms of the liquor stores, improve neighborhood conditions. Just this last week, we closed 28 apartment complexes, which involve 80 individual apartments. These were places that we don't feel are fit for habitation, human habitation. We're going to either force the landlord to bring those up to code, or we'll continue to take enforcement action. And we all know that these are many times the same places where we see a lot of drug activity, too. So it's a way of dealing with that. In South Dallas, we've had 161 property complaints since 1991, and we've gotten 17 cell abatements out of that. We still have a number of those cases that are still proceeding. Sometimes I think our frustration is that those seem to proceed rather slowly, and that there's a legal process there that has to be applied. But where we see, a unit, where we go in with the safety and take action on either from a criminal standpoint or for code violations, and once those are handled, we see about a 50 or 60 percent drop in crime at that point. I brought a bunch of charts, but it's been anything up here today, because they're too small for me to see, but I'd like to take and cut it off there and maybe save money in time for questions. Thank you.
I always have trouble with these lights because you guys are taller than I am. I'd like to say that, I apologize for being 30 minutes late, but I just left the President of the United States and the Governor. And I expressed to the Governor some of my concerns about the crime. As a matter of fact, I invited all of them here. Senator Ross West, the whole nine yards was there. About 200 of our prestigious people are in this city, and they're now currently meeting across town. We have a problem, and the problem is not going to go away overnight, and our problem is crime. Crime is plaguing the entire city. But what we have in South Dallas is a lot of sporadic drive-by shootings. We have problems with prostitution. We have problems with illegal drugs. You name it, the whole nine yards. And I'm very pleased to see that staff and the mayor and everyone else wanted to also have a town hall meeting in South Dallas. And I feel very good being here today because Lincoln High School is where I graduated from. What we're asking for is people to step forward, give us information. You can do it anonymously. As to the crack houses that we have in our city, as to the liquor stores that are selling illegally to minors, these sweeps are being very successful. They're not going to stop. The sweeps are going to continue. They're going to be ongoing because I've asked for them to be. There are no exceptions to the rule on the streets. Second Avenue, Bear Street, Oakland, you name it, Grand, all these sweeps will be continuing and ongoing because it's needed. I attended a safer city seminar in Washington about 10 days ago, and they made a lot of sense to me. They stated that if so many guns on the streets now, we have no idea how many guns are out there, because there's so many on the black market. While we can't curtail guns is one thing that we can't do this very important, we can curtail the sale of bullets. You can have all the guns in the world, but if you don't have any bullets, they're not going to do you any good. And I'm going to be pushing it, I'm going to be selling it, I'm going to be requesting and demanding that we get a law on the sale of bullets, because that is something that we can do something about. That made a lot of sense to me. I shared with them about our store, mobile storefront units. They were impressed. They shared with me a lot of different good things that we can do in this city as a whole. The chief just pointed out a lot of good avenues, and I'm pretty sure he's aware of it, but we do have a lot of good Crime Watch committee meetings and groups in South Dallas. I know, because I've met with a lot of them. Everybody in South Dallas is concerned about crime, and all over the city, because crime is rampant. I had a neighbor who placed some empty cartridges on my porch one morning, and said these bullets were shot in the streets, right on the side of my house. It happens everywhere, not just in North Dallas, but Southeast and West. And I'm glad to see this meeting here today, and I'm glad to see a lot of concerned citizens because it's a serious matter. I was also told at that seminar that if we don't stand up and do something now, in 10 years, and this is scary, folks, the U.S. is going to be at war with the U.S. We're going to be fighting the thugs and the murderers with one another. The streets are not safe. And I'm saying, and I told them, I stood up in a chair to be recognized in a proud 600, that I'm staying by the year 2000. Our elders right now can't sit on the porch and feel safe. Our children can't play in the front yards, in their own front yards, and feel safe. Crime should be the number one priority, and everything else comes secondary. And I'm going to continue to cry out for that. And when I call you, I want you to come down to City Hall and help me out. Thank you.
We're just kind of deviating from the original program. Some of the city officials are indeed coming in. Right now, we'd like to bring up a gentleman who has had his life threatened, even been the target of bullet shots himself. Let's bring up City Councilman Domingo Garcia. City Councilman?
How many of you on a regular basis hear gunshots at night? Heard them last night? How many of you have known somebody, or yourself have been a victim of a crime? Got your house broken into, your car broken into? You know what I'm talking about, okay? Now, let me tell you, if you do the same thing on the north side of town, and it's about half the hands that I just saw go up, okay? The crime is down here. We face it on a daily basis. Let me tell you, I know, because I happen to live in my district, I live in Oak Cliff, okay? I live near Marcellus and Bentley, and so I understand the problem. You know, I, that's why I want to tell me, gangs to me is not something that I read about in the newspaper and say, wow, that's terrible. The gangs are somebody that, they're my neighbors, okay? And the people that are out there doing some of this stuff are also my neighbors, and they're our neighbors, okay? So we're going to have to deal with it. So we're going to start having to go out there and take it among ourselves, and the city of Dallas and the Police Department have to be our partners, otherwise it don't work. And let me tell you, it's going to take that type of deal. You saw some of you, you know, the graffiti, I came down, you see the graffiti everywhere. And that's the first sign that you've got gang activity going on, and somebody puts an X over somebody's whatever, and pretty soon you have shootouts over dumb things like that. So we need to start getting involved. Stop getting rid of the graffiti, have an ordinance, two weeks to get rid of the graffiti. We've got to get our Police Department to start community neighborhood policing. Let me tell you what that means. That means you know the police officer who patrols your neighborhood. He walks, he walks. That's right. Put him on the street, get him to know the neighborhood. And we need a Police Department that looks like Dallas, okay? Dallas is 54 percent of the population. The Police Department needs to look like Dallas. The police officer who patrols our neighborhood needs to look like you. Once we do that, I think we can turn things around. And I know we can. Let me tell you, my city council district, I represent West Dallas, and I represent North Oak Cliff. Crime has down 40 percent in three years. It didn't happen just because it happened, it happened because we got people who care. We started Crime Watches, and we started taking on the gangs. And hell, you know, it's not, it's not fun to have your life there. And anyway, my wife didn't like it at all. My kids didn't like it. But we have to do it. You know, I guess I could have moved out of the neighborhood. That's not the way to do it. If you don't turn it over to the gangs and the thugs and the criminals, you take it away from them. And there's a lot more power in unity than there is in separation. So let me tell you right now, I'm asking all of Dallas to come together. It's time we do it. It's been way too long. The walls that divide have to be crossed by bridges that bring us together, both North Dallas and South Dallas, because we have the same values. Thank you very much.
City Councilman Domingo Garcia. As not very many elected officials would like to have their houses shot up, now there are those of us who live in this community who've had people shoot at you, so you knew exactly what he has done. But that's a brave man to stand forward and even be shot at and not move. Right now, we're going to move on with the program. We're going to bring up Cheryl Peterman, who is the acting director of Economic Development. And Cheryl is going to have to lead up to this, so let's bring Cheryl along with a big hand. Cheryl Peterman.
Economic empowerment, it's a term that we hear a lot. I believe the best way to economically empower a person is to create a job. My mission in life is to create jobs in the city of Dallas. It's one of the city managers and city council's highest priorities. What you picked up on your way in was a list of some of the things that we've done, specifically in the South Dallas Fair Park area over the past couple of years, things that we're continuing to do. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over all of these numbers, but just briefly, the South Dallas Fair Park Trust Fund. Before I go on, there are two of my allies in economic development here that I did want to introduce. Jim K., who's the manager of the South Dallas Fair Park Trust Fund is here, and Jim Reed, who's the director of the Southern Dallas Development Corporation, is here. The South Dallas Fair Park Trust Fund was started in 1987. This year, in a couple of weeks, the council has been asked to approve $135,000 for loans and grants with a 3% interest rate to businesses here in the South Dallas Fair Park area, and then grants for nonprofits. I've got in here some of the loans that have been done, specifically in the South Dallas area. This is not all of it, because you can see it's not, but just in this area, they've loaned out $1.4 million of money that comes from the public sector, and they've leveraged 1.3, almost the same amount, from banks. That's created 203 jobs in this area. On our city staff, we focus, you know, primary focus on South Dallas, Southern Dallas with our incentives and our business retention and expansion efforts. Some of the jobs that we retain here, 327 jobs, I've got a list of those companies, American Kermit Wear, South Dallas Fair Park Care Center, Vid Years, who's building a brand-new store at the corner of Martin Luther King and Albert B. Collins. New jobs that have been created are 121. We have a major drug store that is considering a site in the area. The city manager has set up this neighborhood, the Input Renaissance Program, where the target area is bounded by I-75, Second Avenue, Southland and Warren. This encourages business retention and expansion by addressing declining conditions in the area, such as street improvements and public enforcement. Just last week, city council approved our public-private incentive policies. That's the policy that allows us to give tax abatements, participate in infrastructure improvements to bring businesses to the area. We added a new category for small business, created 10 jobs in this area. It's the highest level of incentives, 100% tax abatements available for up to 10 years. It's the highest level anywhere in the city, so that further verifies our high priority Last year, we were awarded a special purpose grant from the HUD in Washington for five business assistance centers. One of them is hearing sound doubts of the five that are spread around in the enterprise notes. They're a community resource for business information, orientation, training, management assistance, and administrative support. It's a way for a person to start a small business, actually office there, get help on how to write a business plan, write a computer, do accounting, whatever it takes to start a business, and provide jobs for both yourselves and for other people in the neighborhood. That's being run by a community organization called the InterCity Community Development Corporation. They will be located 2503 Martin Luther King Boulevard. They're just getting started. Let me give you the contact person's name is Arthur Weddington, and his phone number is 428-5481. So if you're thinking of starting a business in each town, there are people to call. Okay, it's 428-5481. Man's name is Arthur Weddington. Several years ago, there was legislation passed at the federal level that requires federally insured and regulated financial institutions to reinvest in the community where they're located, called the Community Reinvestment Act. And I have some data in here for 1992. For the South Dallas Fair Park area, 19 home loans were given, 58 home improvement loans were given, and you'll see, have seen that there are two new financial institutions in this area. One is the Nations Bank, 3,300. Bank at three-three-hundred Martin Luther King, and Bank One at twenty-eight-three-three hundred Martin Luther King. Last thing I've got on the list is some related to the World Cup, which is going to be starting in June, some of the improvements that have been made at Fair Park and Cotton Bowl, the jobs that have been created in that area for area residents, twenty-seven jobs for pre-World Cup improvements, post-World Cup improvements that are going to be done, fifty-four jobs, and then actual jobs created during the World Cup itself will be between fifteen and eighteen hundred jobs. And then finally, I have a list of some of the public works projects that have happened in this neighborhood and the temporary construction jobs created. So just give you a little bit of a rundown on what we've done, we continue to focus on this area, and we'll continue in the future.
Let's do a big hand now. Cheryl, the acting director for economic development. Right now, we'd also like to acknowledge that Mr. Paul Diire is here, he is the director of the Dallas Park Board, and we want to thank him for being with us today. Right now, we're going to bring up the three gentlemen who basically initiated this particular beginning here, the African-American Coalition Task Force. We're going to bring up Greg Braysley, Ernest Palmer, and Ken Green. Let's give these gentlemen a big hand.
I want to say good morning and thank you for coming out and being able to be incorporated for the slideshow. I want to thank Mayor Steve Bargain for being here, I want to thank Councilwoman Charlotte Mays, Councilwoman Bob Melon, and Councilman Domingo Garcia, and Levi Davis, and Police Chief Ben Clay. I want the community to realize, I do not want you to be put to sleep what's going on, okay? I want you to understand, because I want to speak the truth, and we're going to tell the truth, okay? And I don't care who feet we step on today. I am tired and fed up with neglect in south Dallas, okay? Some of these politicians, I'm not going to name their names today, okay? We have to mobilize, but we have to save our bridge, not tomorrow, but now. The mayor has put a good faith effort to come out, he deserves a hand. All these councilmen, they are not here today or saying to us, to us, that they don't care about south Dallas. I'm tired and fed up and we ain't taking it no more. I want every black person in this city tonight to get a ballot and get ready to vote. We going to give this city a fire because I am tired of this nonsense. We got people dying in the street, we got no job, no job everywhere. We are not taking it no more. Work's done, all the time, work's a party politician. Fight! Party politician. Fight! We got the elderly, fight! My hungry sister don't have a job. My friend won't get you. What's going on? I'm tired and I'm not taking it no more. I'm thirty-two years old, and they ain't lying to me, twenty-nine point five percent African American, and we cannot get what we want. Thank you. Founding chair of the act, the African-American Coalition Task Force, that's Ken Green, who's founder and co-chair, and Greg Braysley, who's founder and co-chair. I want to say to you today that African-American Coalition Task Force was founded in nineteen ninety with a vision of implementing ideas and creating solutions for our community, and to act as a support group for the leadership in Dallas, not to overshadow, not to get more media attention, not to just try and water down a subject. Our purpose here was to assist our leadership, but we went to our leadership as individuals offering help, but they didn't want us there for whatever reason or another. I'm not going to call any names, but we are tired. All of the statistics that were said here, it sounds good, but we want to see it. This is the vision of life. Now, the city of Dallas is the eight largest city in the United States. Well, is it seven? It is the eight largest city, and I'm correct, saying correctly, it's the seventh largest city in the nation. That makes it even worse, because twenty-nine percent of that is African American, okay? With lack of development in the southern Dallas, second. Now, at the same time, we realize that there is a problem, but the whole issue is not crime. We're here to talk about crime today, but we want to start addressing what are the causes of crime. See, the cause of crime is the lack of very good economic development. And you know who I'm talking to? It's the city of Dallas, folks. Tell them this, if you're American, you, if you're going to use, I'm going to put it like this, I'm not going to call any names, but I found it, if you go a brick and a pack of wild dogs, the only one that scream is the one that can hit me. It is the lack of commitment that has been shown by the city of Dallas to develop economic structures in the southern region. This is not a black or white issue, it just happened to be that south Dallas is black, okay? We're not covered, we know there's race retention in Dallas, as you see from the parade that we had last year, okay? We heard all those statistics, but what the statistics does not show is that Dallas, if you go to the north side, I apologize, this is a little blurry, you go on Ross Avenue, not even a block away from downtown, you see economic development from Ross Avenue all the way to the river. You see economic development from Ross Avenue all the way to the river. You go to the east and the west, there's economic development, Bay of Hospital District, Earth Economic Development, they're building new jails, the whole war on our people. We need to address the real problem. This is the problem. This is ten blocks away from downtown, this is our economic development. A bad economy, a bad economy, we act as a dead patrol of abuses and prostitution. This is our, this is five, this is not even five or ten blocks away from downtown in south Dallas. But, but see, they don't commit it to reconstruct a condo. They have to, they have to keep it on that, that's where that's where our life. But I didn't, I didn't want to let them destroy the neighborhood, and run their own story, so no danger, we have to control the game. We're tired of businesses leaving our community, but at that rapid rate, it's quiet, they're leaving our community, but pawn shops are taking their place. Now, don't go saying, I mean, Mayor Barbour said to me, that, well, we're working, Mayor Barbour, but he says to me, that, oh, we put five new banks in south Dallas. Hey, we put your banks there because you got a railroad raid going through, Home and Land, okay? You put your banks there on one of the D's because the World Cup is coming. That's what we're reading, everybody likes that. They say, they say, let's say he put those banks there, let's say he put those banks there as a show of good faith to our people, let's say he did that. But we don't get a bank in our neighborhood just to take our money and not give them back. Yeah, and the people that are leaving our community are being replaced with vacant buildings like this, which you use as a can, just while you prevent their frustration by using a beat right one eighty-seven on the wall. They did. I feel like those murders in south Dallas, my sympathy goes, in north Dallas, my sympathy goes out to them, but I think it was more of a political statement and everything, because our people have shown the willingness to, when they get frustrated, we destroy our own communities. You see that in LA? But these young folks are getting tired, they say, they don't want to throw that. Now, I don't want this to happen, but it's going to change the island until the city of Dallas stands up and addresses economic issues. Homes, you know, the homes, we, I represent eighty-five percent of the home, why is that? Because of lack of economic development. They trying to fool their people from under the bridge just to make that sound a little good for the world. See, we can't hide the problem, stop trying to, this is what's inside out, this is what we have. See, instead of them dressing, addressing this need, instead of them addressing this need, okay, they would have spent three million dollars on a helicopter pad for a convention center. If I'm not mistaken, that chunk of three million dollars is what it would take to hire one hundred forty officers to give them help. And they believe in us, they have to get up and out of the country, honey, I'll be home after work, but he don't believe that's true, she don't believe that's true, it's not the only part, they need help. It's a good, it's a bad, but if you drive down a road and they need help, the same three million dollars to hire one hundred forty officers. At the same time, the city of Dallas has shown the willingness to spend two hundred thousand dollars on that vise we committed to advise MWB on the matter, but maybe that vise from outside of Dallas can tell us what to do. That's how they grow up in their money, that's how they grow up in their money. You feel me? That's how they grow up in their money.